Good afternoon, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Community Development Commission. Today is Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. Madam Secretary, please take role.
Commissioner Covington. Commissioner Lee.
Yeah.
Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Cornelius.
Present.
Commissioner Rios. Thank you. Commissioner Gallegos?
Here.
Thank you. We have four. We're gonna nominate her.
Thank you. Seeing that, seeing a chrome, this meeting is officially called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Claudio, will you rise, please? Thank you. At this time, members of the public may address the Community Development Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No actions may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does, do we have any public comments? Nope? Okay. So now we'll move to the consent calendar. This is the time for us to consider the matters under consent calendar, items one, two, three. Do I have a motion to approve items one, two, three?
Motion to approve items one, two, one, one through three.
Second.
Thank you. Can you please take role? Or everyone in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion. Anyone opposed? Matter approved by unanimous consent. Now we'll move to the business calendar. We'll now consider business, consider matters under the business calendar and the first, it's item number four, nominate Shelby Gutierrez to serve on the commission, on the Community Development Commission at Santa Ana Unified School District Representative. Staff, would you report on this matter?
Well, we wanna welcome and nominate Shelby Gutierrez as the student commissioner for the Community Development Commission. And we would like to nominate her and take a vote. If we approve, we move forward.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve.
Okay.
Thank you. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, matter is approved by unanimous consent. Congratulations, Shelby. Are you gonna administer a note or not? No? Okay. Okay, we have the second item on the business calendar is item number five. The nonprofit community develop, development block grant application for fiscal year 2024 to 2026. And we're, I'm guessing we have a report?
Presentation.
A presentation. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. So my name is David Flores, Senior Community Development Analyst with the City of Santa Ana. So tonight I'm going to give you a brief presentation on the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Application for Fiscal Year 24 to 26. Perfect. So tonight we're coming to this body for two recommended actions. The first one is to recommend city council approve the nonprofit Community Development Block Grant Application for Fiscal Year 24 to 26. And the second one is to appoint at least three commissioners to an ad hoc committee made up of three commissioners and two staff to review and make recommendations on the funding recommendations for nonprofit community block grant applications for fiscal year 2024. Or 24 to 26, excuse me. So with that, these are the items I'm gonna cover today. So we'll talk a little bit about CDBG basics, CDBG funding allocation, CDBG application process, and the four steps to approve the applications. So let's start with CDBG basics. So the primary objective of CDBG is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities, principally to persons that are low to moderate income. And we can do this in a variety of different ways, right? Which if you were here when we presented the annual action plan, we gave you several examples. We provided some pictures on how we were providing services with like our street improvements, we curb improvements, we were providing some housing services. We provided funding to code enforcement for them to go out to our community to make sure that they have viable living environment, you know, making sure that the houses are up to code. And that, and then the one that we're gonna talk about today is all the public service programs that we're gonna provide through CDBG. Though the city may use up to 15% of our annual allocation to provide public service programs. So I provided you with a list of some of the public service programs that we can provide, but it's not limited to, to those samples that I provided. So we can do employment services to our community, crime prevention activities. We can fund health programs for our community. Drug abuse education programs such as the YMCA or the Boys and Girls Club when they do after-school programs for some of the kids. Provide educational tutoring programs, fair housing counseling, home buyer down payment assistance and recreational needs and other type of services. So these services are not limited to one group of our residents. They can be for all of them. Or we can tailor the services to specifically to a specific group of our community such as seniors who are 62 and over, the, our veterans, or persons that are homeless in our community. So the city awards the CDBG funds to nonprofit organizations through a transparent competitive process for programs that mostly, that most effectively serve our residents. So this body plays a very important role in selecting and reviewing those applications so that they can provide the public services to our community. This slide just gives you general idea of some of the activities that are eligible and some that are not eligible. So some of the activities that are eligible under CDBG is we can acquire property to do a variety of things. We can build housing there, we could build parks, and I'm not sure if you guys went to the grand opening last week on Raiden Myrtle, we just opened up a new park there. It turned out to be a beautiful park. There was a great turnout. So we purchased the property with CDBG funds and there were other funding sources that were provided to create the actual park itself. So we could blend the different funding sources to create viable environments for our community. We can do rehabilitation program of our single-family housing units. We can provide public service programs and we can do construction work in our city, right? So like street improvements, curb improvements, we can provide funding to our libraries so we can improve them with adding a new roof or maybe new windows so that they don't leak when it rains and damage the, all the books or all the facility, the, the, the furniture that's in there. It's very important. So that, those are eligible activities. Ineligible activities consist of acquisition or acquiring buildings for the general purpose of conducting government business. So we can't purchase a city hall. We can't purchase a council chambers with CDBG funds. We can't provide CDBG funds for political activity. So if we want to donate for a certain council member or a commissioner or anybody else, that's an ineligible activity under CDBG. And we, obviously, we can't do any construction for housing units. Yeah, for any type of housing unit. So we could purchase a lamp, but we can invest money in the new construction of housing units. Sorry, we're having a little bit of technical. Okay. So any question on basics of CDBG? What's CDBG? What's eligible? What's not eligible?
Question on eligibility on the political activities. Would that include like any organization that does political activities as part of their duties? But the money, what they're seeking, like the money would not go towards that.
Can you provide me an example of an organization?
Like say, just give a random one, like, I think I can answer that. If it's a nonprofit that also does activities that could be considered political in nature. As long as the, as long as the funding isn't going towards that. So,
Got it. Okay.
Yes, we're, we're, we're fine.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. So CDBG funding allocations. I don't know why there's a, like, but we'll move on. So estimated funding allocation. So every year we receive CDBG funding and that funding fluctuates every single year because that depends on what Congress is approving. So sometimes it'll go higher than 4.8 what we received this year, or it could go lower. Okay, so that's why we're providing you with estimated allocations for our CDBG program. So for fiscal year 24 to 25, we're estimated that we're gonna receive the same funding level as we receive for fiscal year 23, which is 4.8 million. And we're also estimating we're gonna receive that same amount for fiscal year 25 to 26. So when we combine the total of those two fiscal years, sorry, there's a glitch here. When we combine those two, we get 9.6 million, okay, for a two-year period. So HUD allows us to provide 15%, a maximum of 15% of those, of those funding sources to be allocated for public services, up to 15%. So the City of Santa Ana has always been very generous with going up to the maximum amount of 15%. There's other cities that do 10%, 12%, a lot lower than us, but we always go up to the max of 15%. So if we do 15% of 9.6 million, that's 1.4 million, okay, for a two-year period. And then you could see how I broke it down per fiscal year. So for fiscal year 24 to 25, we're gonna award 721,000 and the same amount for 25 to 26 fiscal year. Just keep in mind that once we get the award letter, those numbers may go up or they may go down. Okay, and we usually receive our award letter like in May of every single year. Any questions on funding allocation? Okay, application process. So we provided you with a timeline of the process itself because this body's gonna take a very active role in participating in the review and selection of all the nonprofits and all the funding levels. So today, October 25th, we're bringing the application to this body so you can review and make the recommendation to our council to to approve the application so that it can be released to all the nonprofits so they can apply. On November 7th, it's going to city council. They're gonna review it and hopefully they'll approve it after your recommendation. On November 8th, the application is gonna be released for a period of 45 days. So we think that's sufficient amount of time for all the nonprofits to review, to gather all the documents that they need and to submit the application to us. On November 14th, we're gonna have a mandatory CDBG application for our training, excuse me, for all the nonprofits. At that time, we're gonna provide questions and answers. We're going to provide technical assistance that they may need so that they can complete the application and submit it in a timely manner. On December 18th, the applications are gonna be due by 5:00 PM. December 19th through December 21st, the staff is gonna review all the applications to make sure that they have the minimum amount of required documentation so that they can move to the second round of the review process. So that's the staff's responsibility. January 10th, that's gonna be the first review of the applications by the, this commission's ad hoc committee. And hopefully we can select the three members at the end of this meeting or right before the end. And then on Tuesday, January 23rd and Thursday, January 25th, that's an exciting time because that's when we're gonna invite all the nonprofits to come into this body and they're gonna do a presentation of the programs that they're intending to, to provide to the community. And at that point, you're gonna have the opportunity to ask questions, to review the applications and to gather whatever information you need to make an informed decision of who you're gonna fund and at what funding level. On February 1st, that would be the second review of the applications by the ad hoc committee. And then February 28th, we're gonna come back to this body and we'll make a full recommendation to take to council for their final approval, which will be on March 19th council meeting. And at that point, it will be a public hearing at the council meeting. Hopefully the council reviews everything and approves it just the way that you recommended. But sometimes it doesn't happen that way. Keep in mind that the council may have a, a project that they would like to fund. So they may take a nonprofit away from your recommendation and add that to the, and it's their right to do that. Or if you select a certain funding level, they may say, no, we don't want to fund this organization at this funding level. Let's give them more or let's decrease their funding. So just keep in mind that that happens. So it's very important that after this body reviews the funding levels and the recommendations that you communicate with your council members to inform them, okay, of your recommendations. So we can have a smooth process.
One minor clarification, the, for any nonprofits who may watch this meeting. The training on November 14th, we did, it is optional. It's not mandatory. So we, we, we wanna make it available for, for any applicants interested so that we can train them on the, on the application process.
Thank you, Johnson. All right. Next item. So applications will be made available online. We try to do the best that we can to do massive outreach so we can provide the application to all of our nonprofits. So we're going to provide the application on the community development agency's webpage so that people can review it and download it. We're going to provide that on Planet Bits, which is our management system. There's gonna be a mass email to all the nonprofits that we have on our contact list here in, with CDBG. And that's approximately 60 nonprofits. And we're also gonna ask 211 to send out a notice to all the nonprofits on their contact list, letting them know that CDBG funding will be available for public services. So staff will be available to assist all the nonprofits with technical support throughout the application process. So like I stated before, when the applications come in, the city would do, will conduct a minimum threshold review to make sure that the minimum amount of documents that are required are actually turned in. So some of those documents consist of the 501(c)(3) status, articles of incorporation for the nonprofit, a current audit document, whether it's a 990 form or a single audit, the list of the board members so we can ensure that there's no conflict of interest, program information, the justification of why they need to provide this program to our city, and their two budgets for two fiscal years. And also proof that they're registered under the SAM.gov website to make sure that they're able to receive federal funding. So in the application, if you had time to review it, on the first page, we have eight funding priorities, but they're not limited to these priorities. They could apply for, for other things, but we're gonna give priority to these eight, which include crime prevention suppression programs, programs that target victims of domestic violence, services that benefit children and a child is considered, any child under the age of 13. Health services, mental health services, legal services, senior services, and a senior's defined anybody who's 62 years or over. And then the last one, youth services. So that's between the ages of 13 and 19. That's considered of youth. So any questions in regards to the, the application process?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So the, are the, are the funding priorities listed in order of priority or is it?
Uh, no.
No?
Okay. So it could be any of them.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that once that the, our recommendations are brought before the council, they could earmark, they could decrease or increase the funding. So if they do so, does that take away from another organization? They both like increase the funding for one nonprofit. Does that take away from the funding for another?
It can happen, yes. It has happened in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that we have the priorities listed. Can organizations that only do work within those priorities apply or can it be other organizations like, I don't know, nonprofits for affordable housing or like food programs and things like that?
Yes, all nonprofits can apply. We're just gonna give priority to, to those eight items.
Got it. Okay.
But they can also apply.
Okay, thank you.
And one final question, just regarding the training for the application process. Are we able to get that link so, just so we understand the application process a little bit better or is that something we can?
Did you ask, are you able to attend?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions? Awesome. All right. So four-step approval process. So the first step is for the staff to conduct a minimum threshold review to make sure that they could move forward to the next step. The second step is the Community Development Commission ad hoc committee will review the applications and they will make their recommendations to the entire commission for their approval and recommendation to the city council. The commission or the ad hoc committee, actually the whole entire commission will have an opportunity to hear the presentation from all the nonprofits of all the programs that they're proposing to provide to our community, once again on January 23rd and January 25th. And at that point, you can ask questions. Most of the nonprofits, the majority of the nonprofits will be asked to provide you with an overview of their organization, an overview of the proposed project or the services and need, and an overview of the funding requests. Some agencies will request, you know, 80,000 or 150,000. So that's time for you to ask, why do you need 150,000 to provide this type of service, right? An overview of the staffing capacity as well. So they should provide you with all this information so that you can make an informed decision of who you're gonna fund. So that's step number two. Step number three, it goes to city council, reviews the commission's recommendation. They may adopt or change the recommendation, okay, but that, they're the final ones. Step four, once the council makes their decision, we prepare the annual action plan and we submit that to HUD for their final approval. And then they could, the nonprofits can start providing services effective July 1st, which is the beginning of our fiscal year. So the minimum and maximum funding for public services, and this is also in the application. So the minimum grant request per program per fiscal year is $40,000 per year. So if we're gonna provide them with two years of funding, that would equal 80,000, right? Last year or last two years, we provided them with the minimum of 30,000. So we're increasing it this year to 40,000 because the nonprofits have stated to us that they're having a difficult time retaining employees because they can't pay their salaries. So they need additional assistance in the form of funds to pay the salaries and benefits. So we decided to increase it to 40,000. And then the maximum amount of, per grant request per program per fiscal year is 75,000, which equals 150 for two year, two-year period. And if nonprofits decide to collaborate with one another and they submit an application, together, we could potentially give them up to $150,000, which is $300,000 for a period of two years.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we audit this money after you give it to them? Are they required to present their books on how they spend the money? Or is there any certain limitations on how they can spend the money or not?
Great question. So when we have the training, we'll have a training before they apply and then we'll have a training after they get the awards. And at that time, we're gonna talk about their financial responsibility, right? So CDBG is always a reimbursable program. So we only give them money when they submit the proper reimbursement request form. So that means if they're paying for salaries, we need copies of their pay stubs, time cards, and we verify that the individual is actually being working under CDBG and then we're able to reimburse them for those hours. Yeah, or if they're purchasing supplies for a certain program, we wanna have receipts that verify that they're purchasing those products for that youth program, for example. So they have to provide us with all the reimbursable documents before we provide them with these funds.
So let's say if a nonprofit comes and they present a program that they have not launched yet and that's the reason why they're seeking the grant so they're able to launch a certain program. So they will have to get the money somewhere else and then we will reimburse.
That's correct.
After the program is finalized and then we can corroborate their expenses.
That's correct. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be looking at as a minimum threshold review to make sure that they have the financial capacity, right, to provide the program and that they have the staffing capacity to provide the program. So we don't wanna give or award funds to a nonprofit that doesn't have those capacities to, to run a program. It's just not a good decision to make, but that's something that we're gonna all review. Yes.
I have two questions. The first one, does the city get reimbursed for the money that they allocate to the organizations after they allocated it? Or is it money that CDBG, or CDBG funds that are already in the city's possession and then they transfer it over?
Great question. So the way CDBG is run, whenever they, the nonprofits, well, with CDBG ESG in home, we usually pay out through the general funds, right? And then once all that money is paid out, then we go to HUD and we say, this is what we paid out under these three different programs. Now we wanna draw down the funds from our line of credit. And then that's how we reimburse the city for the money that we paid out for whatever program we have.
So the city's also on a reimbursement?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my second question was, is it, in the previous years have, let's say the, the same few organizations continue to apply and continue to get money? Or do we try to give funds to organizations that haven't received funds before? Like, is there a trend at all?
So we have some nonprofits that are pretty consistent and they continue to apply. And they're very strong nonprofits, so we know that they can provide the services without any type of hiccup. But we always open the doors to new nonprofits, right? So I believe this year or for the last two years, we probably had maybe three to four new nonprofits that were awarded funds. But unfortunately, like, I believe two of them decided that they couldn't provide the services under CDBG, so they decided to cancel the award. Yeah, and that's one of the risks that we take, but we monitor all the nonprofits to make sure that they're complying with their fiscal responsibilities, with their performance standards. And we also do an audit every single year for all the nonprofits to make sure that they're complying with all the CDBG regulations.
I would just, I would just add to that, that the, as we're, we're explaining right in the presentation, the award process is driven by the commission and then approved by city council. So staff does participate on the ad hoc committee, but it's very much driven by the commission, so the awards are made by the commission. And then second, we, we definitely appreciate the commission helping us publicize the application. Once we release it and issue it following city council approval, your help to, to reach new nonprofits is greatly appreciated so that we can, we can get the application to.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This is gonna be my first question and please forgive my ignorance. When you're, when you have the eight funding priorities and you just mentioned about staff, that organizations need to prioritize staff. One of my concerns is knowing the challenges with fiscal sponsors and the structure that it's already in place. And a lot of these organizations give out services, but a lot of those services are run by volunteers and sometimes they don't get recognition or they don't get. or they don't get any extra pen or any amount of money or youth or seniors. Um, how do we make sure that that funding gets to community and not just on, on staff for the organizations?
Sure. So um, every quarter, the nonprofits have to submit what we call a performance uh progress report. So on that progress report, they're telling us how many uh members they're enrolling into that program and what services they're providing. And that's how we ensure that the money is going to the community or the services are going to the community through the staff or the volunteers.
Um, and I'm saying this because um I've been a volunteer for the last nineteen years and I didn't know that nonprofits used to get grants to run their services. And as a single mom, and I didn't know that I could ask for childcare. I didn't know that nonprofits could provide a meal for those programs. So how do we know for sure that that money is going there? Not just by getting um lists or signing, signing lists. I don't know if I'm making sense, but I just want to make sure that we are taking in consideration community and the people who are really receiving those services and are benefiting from city, CDBG money.
Yeah, that's a great question. So um, so I already mentioned the quarterly progress report, right? That gives us all the numbers and narrative sections of what services they're providing. But we also do uh two types of audits. So we go out to the community, the staff will go out and we'll do observations to make sure that they're providing services to the community, so that's one way. And we also contract with um our consultants that do the intensive monitoring of those nonprofits. So with that monitoring, we have to see case files, we have to see that there some type of written documentation that they're providing the service to those clients. So there has to be sign-in sheets, there has to be verification of the services that were being provided. Um, and then sometimes they call the clients and they say, you know, you were on the, um, you were provided services through this nonprofit, are you satisfied with the services? They, they actually provide the service to you, those kinds of things. Yeah, did I answer your question? Awesome, thank you. Other questions?
I have a request. Our question.
Request.
Um, it is my first time actually going through, through this program and it's so exciting, I love it. Um, but just to make sure that I'm more familiar with that, if it's not too much trouble to staff, is there any way that you can um email us that our, these nonprofits that happened last year or the year before that? Or um, or even the links to the meetings, I would like to see how the process took place or what type of nonprofits are the ones that are really applying for this to kind of understand a little bit more about the programming and how they explain how they're going to be using this money and all that?
Sure, so you want the list of all the nonprofits that we provided funds from this last year and previous?
Yeah, from the previous.
We could do that.
Yeah, thank you.
As a matter of fact, just to um mention, when we came to this body to present the annual action plan, one of the exhibits was the funding summaries. I don't know if you recall this, but these are all the nonprofits that were awarded. They have the amounts and a brief description of the services that they provided. But we can definitely send this out again, i- if you like us to. Not at all, we could do that, thank you, do that in the morning.
Um, any other questions?
No, okay, so then one last slide. So just to remind you, we're asking for two items. One, that you recommend city council to approve the nonprofit community development block grant application for two fiscal years. And also to appoint at least three commissioners to the ad hoc committee so you can assist us with uh reviewing and approving the applications. Okay, and that's my presentation, thank you for your time.
Thank you. He did good, he did good. Um, so I'm guessing at this point, do we um?
Yeah, what I, what I'd recommend is taking it in two parts. Uh, if you want to approve the application first and then the second part, you would, you would then ask for volunteers for the ad hoc.
So do I have a motion to approve, to approve the application?
Motion?
Uh, yeah, second.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries with unanimous consent. And now we're going to move to the part of um getting three commissioners appointed to the ad hoc committee. Does anyone want to appoint anyone at this point or want to appoint themselves?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Okay. Claudio?
Um, I'd actually like to nominate Anna Laura Padilla.
Oh, thank you, Claudio, you always like me to put me to work, huh?
Yes.
How about you?
Oh, I'm like done it before, so it's up for, you know, if anyone wants to volunteer first, if not, I can take over again, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
I think I would like to nominate myself.
Okay. And uh?
Um, I also want to nominate Commissioner Rios, not to give you my word, but.
Awesome, so we have Commissioner Rios, um, Cornelius, myself, and Commissioner Lee. I, I mean, we have three already, you want to join or you're okay with the three? Okay. So everyone in favors for Commissioner Rios, uh, Padilla and Cornelius to be the ad hoc committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. We did it quick, I thought we were going to take longer. Okay, um, so now that is the end of our business calendar, I believe. And we're going to move to staff uh comments.
Uh, thank you, uh, by Sherpa Dia. And uh, thank you very much to the commission for your approval of the uh appro- approval of this year's CDBG application and the appointment of the ad hoc committee. We greatly appreciate the uh, the time and effort of the uh, the ad hoc committee in this important process. Uh, the uh, the uh, only thing we want to report is um, at the last commission meeting, uh, the commissioners approved our RFP for affordable homeownership opportunities and the additional funds for our down payment assistance program. And following that meeting, we did recommend that to our city council on October seventeenth. They approved it unanimously. And we are proud to uh, report out that we have issued the RFP for seven point seven million dollars for affordable homeownership opportunities. It's the largest ever investment in affordable homeownership opportunities that the city has ever made. And then the additional funds for our down payment assistance program are already very much at work. Uh, and we have uh participated in events these past three Saturdays in a row, uh, including Salo, Mesquita, Brenda Vega, and Claudia Shaw. And uh, and we are now also in the process of scheduling our um workshops uh for once a month going forward as well to continue to expand the down payment assistance program as wide as possible and reach as many of our residents as possible. So thank you again for your approvals today and for your approval of the uh, the uh, items on the, at the last commission meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff?
You know, I'd just like to uh, welcome a student member Shelby Gutierrez. Uh, hopefully you enjoy our commission, uh, our housing uh authority manager as well as our economic development manager typically come to these. I'm uh glad I had the availability today and welcome and uh uh, to all our commissioners, thank you for all your time. The, these uh, um, awards that are going to go out, go for a two-year period and uh, you see all the time that goes into putting these together. Uh, it used to be an annual award and it was quite time consuming. We're glad that the, it's a two-year timeframe. It allows our nonprofits to better plan out those program services. Uh, because all the audits, all the paperwork, it's quite cumbersome for our nonprofits. So uh, we appreciate you taking all of this so seriously, thank you.
Thank you, so we're going to move on with uh commission member comments. Uh, Commissioner Cornelius?
Uh, thanks, thanks staff for all the hard work. Uh, thank you for the presentation, welcome to our new student member, congratulations. Um, thank you commissioners for all your hard work. And then I have a question regarding the, the tenant members. Are we seeking new tenant members or just supposed to deal with that?
Great question, uh, it is a um difficult process to uh, to identify tenant commissioners. Uh, we are still seeking tenant commissioners to uh submit an application.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Hi, thank you, um, just mainly I want to um welcome Shelby, um, welcome aboard. I'm definitely, when it gets over to you, we'd like to hear, you know, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about you and you know, um, where you come from and what inspired you to be on this commission. So thank you and we look forward to working with you for the next school year.
Commissioner Lee?
Welcome Shelby, welcome, um, yeah, look forward to working with you and you know, welcome you to the commission, I think.
Uh, Commissioner Rios?
Um, I just want to say thank you so much for your patience. I know I haven't been here in the last two months. Um, I had a surgery and then radiation treatment in my um throat, my neck. Uh, but I'm really happy to be here to have a voice and I'm super um happy that Shelby is here with us and I'm looking forward to the next months and the next meetings, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez?
Um, same thing, just want to welcome my new student member. It's always excited to have um Santa Ana youth join us. Um, I think it's super important to get involved in um local politics. Um, I also wanted to thank staff, um, sorry for completely interrupting the presentation. Um, I woke up sick and I didn't want to get all of you sick, so um Yanka was kind enough to isolate me a little bit so I don't get everybody sick. But um, yeah, thank you all for a really great presentation. You guys are always so ready to answer our questions. Um, I know it's not easy, so I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, now our newest member Shelby, do you want to share some words with us? Introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about you.
Uh, hi, my name is Shelby Gutierrez, I am a sophomore at Santa Ana High School. Um, I'm very grateful to be here and thank you all for having me, I'm welcome.
Thank you. Um, well, welcome to the commission and uh I just want to thank also staff for the, for the presentation, I'm excited about this um, and to be a part of the ad hoc committee. Um, and also, um, I've been going to a lot of meetings and been meeting a lot of um economic development and housing commissioners for other cities. And I'm just um so surprised to see everything that they're doing and very proud to know that we're doing great at this commission and that the staff is doing amazing with affordable housing. And every time I read um the reports and we see what, what's coming, it's exciting and it's um and it's very good to have all this information so I can share every time I go to to different places and I get to meet these people that are in our same, um, in our same seats but in other cities. But definitely um, listening to the last council meeting, I think we have a lot of concerns from uh business owners as well. And I feel part of our commission is also the part of economic development. And I would like to um, for us to also, I don't know if we can have a study session or we can meet one-on-one, at least I would like to meet with staff so we can understand what type of funding we have allocated for the business development. I know we have some programs going on. I know last time when I requested a study session on just the economic development part, um Sylvia came and did a great presentation about it. But I would like to know more about it and what else can we do in that side to to grow our um, our business um, community in Santa Ana. Especially being part of the business community, I can tell you that sometimes it's very hard to work with the city. And especially when you're about to open a new business. Um, the number one person that goes out there and asks everybody to please come and open your business in Santa Ana. Um, not only Santa Ana, but especially downtown. Um, we have a lot of vacancies in buildings over there. Um, I do see a lot of vacancies around the city uh that can be potentially uh, good business that can attract more uh, more people and honestly, more money to the city because we need it. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that and um, and like I said, we're doing an amazing job at housing. So I feel like it's also time for us to take a little bit of time and do a little bit more on the economic development part of it and on the business part of it. Not that we're not doing anything, we're doing great too, but I would like to see more. I think the city and the staff is capable of like creating more programs or guide us, how can we bring something to the commission so we can all discuss it and, and, and build a program that we can, we can help business owners through through all the things that they're going through right now in the city of Santa Ana. I would really love to see something like that. Um, like again, I'm, I'm able to discuss it one-on-one or I'm able to have a study session in my um if the other commissioners are up for it. And with that, I'll complete my comments, I hope everybody has a good rest of the month. I can't believe the year is ending. And this meeting uh is adjourned, our next meeting will be in um, November fifteen at four thirty.